Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. My name is Crystal Vanuch. I'm the chairman of the board of supervisors. And we don't have anyone participating in the meeting electronically, so we'll move right along to roll call. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Bumpke?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Ms. Gary?
Here.
Ms. Vanuch?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a floor.
Very good. Are we going to do roll call for the schools?
Well, I would think we're here for that.
Yep.
Madam Clerk, would you call our roll, please?
Ms. Chair, Dr. Chase? Ms. Guy, is that here? Is this all set?
Here.
Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a floor.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, moving on to our first item on the agenda, the joint healthcare vendor selection process for county and schools. For this, we're going to recognize Ms. Shannon Wagner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and school board. I'm Shannon Wagner, Director of Human Resources for Stafford County. We are here today to talk about the request for a proposal for health insurance for both county and school employees. This item is considered to be new business and information for the boards to hear the results of the process. And then we will be back to each of the boards, respectively, to offer you the opportunity to officially award the contract. I will now, I would now like to introduce Brian Glazer with Aon. He is the consultant who has been helping us through this process. He will present the summary of the RFP process and the final results for you all to consider.
Thank you for having us here. Appreciate the opportunity for Aon to help the Stafford County government and Stafford County public school system in this important RFP process. So I do believe we have slides available for the RFP overview. Perfect. We can move to slide two. Oh, I think I do that. Perfect. So Aon was selected to advise both the Stafford County government and the Stafford County public schools on this RFP process for all lines of business for medical, vision, EAP, stop loss, dental, and prescription drug. So we worked in concert, of course, with the procurement departments for both organizations to put out an RFP based on our standard processes for Aon for public entities. We put that out, and you can see the number of offers that came back to that, to bid on each of those RFPs. We did select, in consult with the HR departments for each, we did select to separate these RFPs out as those bullets set. So we had one selection for medical, vision, EAP, and stop loss vendor, one selection for prescription drug vendor, and one selection for a dental vendor. As you know, this is a joint decision for both the schools and the county. And so we looked at, as we cut all the data through the RFP, we looked at how it would affect the county government employees and how it would affect the public school employees as well. We'll talk about the plan design used on the next slide. But those plan designs, those are your current plan designs for both the county and the public school system. Those were used to make sure that for the services offered, the services that were proposed were proper for the school systems. And please stop me if there's any questions as we go through the process. This is your current health programs. You can see the three plans, the premier, the premium, the core, and the high deductible health plan, the HSA. These are not necessarily the plan designs that the county or the public school systems have to use for the next plan year, but these are the ones that we put out for the RFP process so that the offers could understand your programs, what services they would have to do, and to price them accordingly. Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield is your current provider for all these services, medical, vision, EAP, stop loss, dental, and prescription drug through Ingenio RS. The goals, in concert, we had a consultation with your HR departments, really focused on these key areas. And the scoring of the RFP focused and made sure that we prioritize these areas, right? Of course, the tools and resources available to your employees, especially focused on wellness and mental health, were important and were prioritized during this RFP process. Wanted to find programs that could help find the best quality of care for your members, right? We find that costs aren't just about getting the lowest cost at a provider's office or hospital, but it's actually making sure that all your employees, all your members have the best care available, that quality care. Get that quality care first so they don't have to have ongoing care, if possible. Also, of course, access to network providers. So we want to make sure that if you go out and you want to stay in network with your health plans, you have access to do so and have those discounts available to you for going to network. Similar to what I discussed before, clinical management programs are important, right? We want to make sure that folks who are emerging into a health condition have a health condition, or what we would call high-cost claimants, have programs available to them to help manage those conditions and also to make sure they don't have further episodes of care that are needed. And of course, basic things that we do in an RFP, we want to make sure you have good long-term care, long-term cost improvements. Make sure that you have for your three-year contract plus three potential option years, you have the best pricing that you can get on the marketplace now. And of course, make sure your administrative services are proper for administering your plans. So the selection committee through the process has selected for all three RFPs that Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield maintain being the administrator of all three programs. That was through extensive negotiations with multiple offers, making sure that we got the best deal and concessions from Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield through the process. Through that, Aon has done a preliminary analysis of your costs. If we look at your current costs to what we would project your costs to be for your next plan year, which starts in July 1st of 2022. And you can see, we separate this out, as I said, by the county, by the school system, but we also look at it combined because it is one decision. And you can see that there's the potential for minimal to negative cost increases with this plan. And that is through the RFP process, getting better pricing. And we'll talk about those over the long term through that process. We also have a line item here for the medical that we put additional savings through a program called Prudent RX, and that's through the Anthem Pharmacy Benefit with Ingenio RS. We'll talk about that later in the presentation, just what that is. It's an optional program. You don't have to put that in, but it is a recommendation, and it's highly considered by a lot of employers in the marketplace right now to take advantage of co-pay assistance cards. So we show those in two different ways to get those savings. Then you can see on the dental side, a nominal increase of 3.3% is what we're projecting. So with these selections, there's no needed changes to your plan designs, that premium, core, or high deductible health plan. Those plan designs, the structures of deductibles, copayments, can stay the same with no cost increases to your employees for next year. We also looked at making sure that those long-term costs are maintained, right? Those are administrative costs for your medical, vision plans, those sort of things. So we get cost concessions on administrative fees. We got, through the process, the county and the public schools found actually a guarantee on discount savings through the medical program. So there's $200,000 fees at risk from Anthem if they don't meet the, what we call discounts at providers. So they have a threshold to say, we are going to negotiate with the providers for Stafford County and Stafford County public schools that they're going to charge X percent of total costs for you. And if we don't do that, we have fees of risk of $200,000 to pay back to you. We also negotiated through this process, in concert with the HR departments, additional programs, which we'll talk about some in the next slide, to, for no additional cost, to add to the member experience. All right, we'll talk about how those work. With prescription drugs, significant discounts and rebate guarantees were taken into account through this negotiation process. So you have a three-year pricing guarantee on prescription drugs, and you also have significantly more rebates coming from pharmaceutical manufacturers through the program, through your contract period. In dental, we worked with Anthem to find guaranteed rates for six years. It's a three-year contract plus three additional years. Those rates will not go up. Those are the administrative fee rates will not go up through your dental program as well. In the final slide here, just to go through some program enhancements for your employees and your members in your programs, Anthem has provided at no additional cost through this process a program called Total Health Total U. This is an integrated advocacy and predictive analytics program to help identify members who have an emergent health condition or a health condition right away to get them different resources that are available through Anthem, through their providers, make sure that we have their care as appropriate as well. It's additional advocacy for someone who calls into Anthem as well. It's integrated with the data and information that Anthem has on you. So let's say you call in to get an ID card, and you say, hey, I'd like a new ID card. They have information on you that says, well, Brian, you haven't gone to the doctor, your primary care doctor, in three years. Maybe you should go to the doctor. Let us help you with that appointment. Hey, we see from some test results that you have previously, you might be prediabetic. Let's talk about a program that we have that can help prediabetics. So getting that advocacy when they initiate care with Anthem, that's an enhancement now through Total Health Total U. Again, that is, that's an optional program, but it is free of charge, no additional cost with the price concessions that you have under this new contract. Talked about Prudent RX before, and I just wanted to describe that program a little bit. Again, that's an optional program, no additional charge, but we do see the potential for savings for both your employees and members and the plan, who are, and these members are on high-cost specialty drugs. What happens, and I won't go in too much detail into it unless there's questions to it. Pharmaceutical manufacturers, as you might know, provide co-pay assistance to folks who are on high-cost specialty drugs. So under your plan structures, right, there's $100, $150 co-pay for a specialty drug, let's say. And the member takes advantage of that co-pay assistance. They pay nothing for the drug. The plan pays the remainder. That co-pay assistance can actually provide much more assistance that the plan can take advantage of, right? Because they would provide, let's say, $3,000, and I'm just using a number, of co-pay assistance, if required, for the plan, right, for the member. So with Prudent RX, Prudent RX is a separate company that Anthem works with, or a sub-vendor for Anthem, that works on your plan design, works in that program to maximize and optimize that co-pay assistance from pharmaceutical manufacturers. So what will happen is your plan design for those specialty drugs that are provided, the co-insurance would actually increase to 30%. But the member will still pay zero under that program. They're on the program, their process will not change. They will pay zero. But the plan will take advantage of more of that co-pay assistance to make sure your costs for the plan and also for all your members stay down and take advantage of those. Unfortunately, pharmaceutical manufacturers are using that co-pay assistance to keep costs, general costs up. And they say, okay, we'll provide this co-pay assistance to not have that affect the member, but plans are paying for that. So we've been working with the teams, looking at that program. That's not definitive to put into place, but that is something that's being considered. And also for dental, just looking at a few different enhancements that we have with Anthem for the upcoming year, you know, whole health connection, which just really takes into account all the data, all the claims information that you have for medical, prescription drug, to see if there's additional dental needs for your membership. And also teledentistry, that is not, you know, doing a root canal remotely, but that's really having advocacy services and informational services for dental issues, including an email for what they call Ask a Hygenna so you can get different information there. And with that, I'll open up to any questions for this information.
We have a lot of questions.
How many employees do you have on the board right now?
Yeah, I believe there's a total eligible of about 4,000.
4,000?
Yeah, combined.
So with COVID, everybody, I know you probably assured to teach and stuff like that. That number goes down, does the plan numbers go down too? So in other words, if you have 4,000 on right now and 500 are not on it next year, do you all get a refund back?
Sure, that's a great question. So the programs are what we call self-insured. So the government and the school systems pay just the claims that are actually paid for outside of the vision program, which is fully insured, but they pay just the claims for those coverages. So if the enrollment goes down and subsequently the claims go down, your costs go down as well commensurate with that decline. Now, the administrative fees that we have negotiated through this RFP process, they'll stay the same. So they don't, you know, a lot of times if costs, if enrollment goes down, they'll increase administrative fees because they don't have the economies of scale to do that work. Through this negotiation, those costs will not go up.
So you don't, in other words, what I guess I'm asking you, you wouldn't get a check at the end of the year saying, oh, you underestimated, we're going to give you some money back. They don't do that.
No, no, because you're paying the claims directly. Now, now, it could be under budget for what you budgeted.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah.
Dr. Warner had her hand up first.
I was curious about the Prudent Prescription Pharmacy Benefit Plan. Are they making substitutionings say for instead of an off-line tear drug or an alternate to some medications or areas of the drug?
For those medications, it's as prescribed. It's as what's in the formulary, as prescribed because these are just for certain specialty medications. So it's not for all drugs. And it's those high-cost specialty medications that have that co-pay assistance tied with it. Absolutely.
Supervisor Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like when you said there's free of no charge or no additional charges, great. But not sure how many funds were received during COVID from federal or state, but did you make any provisions for how healthcare is being administered now with telehealth? And because that lowers the cost? And also, I wanted to know what accommodations were made in terms of the mental health, was that factored in into these programs?
Yeah, great question. So virtual care through Anthem has been in place, and you have, you continue to have that virtual care availability through Anthem's program, right? So those basic conditions, the telemedicine conditions, you can utilize Anthem for those conditions. Anthem is working to expand that. And really, providers are working to expand that on a provider-provided basis, those are doctors and hospital systems, to utilize that more and more instead of coming into the office. So those were all factored into making sure that we had the right program for you. With mental health and behavioral health, that was specifically in our analysis, that was specifically designated through especially access to care and access to providers and making sure that the offers had proper access so that if somebody needed mental health care, they could access that. Anthem is still working, and there's some movement on virtual mental health care. So that will be available, we believe, in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick follow-up question to Supervisor Young's question. How robust is the options for mental health? Because one of the issues with healthcare insurance is that not a lot of providers fall within those networks. And so as the need for mental health increases, is Anthem going to accommodate that by trying to capture as much providers? Because even the ones that might be in network, they're usually booked up for like months.
Yeah, yeah. And I will say, that is an issue not just with Anthem, but as an issue across the board of having enough access and enough providers there. Aon is working with Anthem and all the carriers, the major carriers, to push that issue. The problem is, there's just, and I'm just trying to be honest to that, there's just not enough providers opening up to the marketplace with the demand that's out there. So we worked to make sure that the access to coverage, the access to providers, and tried to analyze that as best we could, was better than market. And we do feel that Anthem's offering and provider access is better than the other carriers. They didn't initially bid on this, but we do have that information. But we want to work with, because I think the better access is through virtual mental health care and potentially other programs that Anthem or others can offer. But certainly, you know, I can't say that that has been solved or that's solved with this RFP, but that is certainly an issue out there in the marketplace.
Supervisor Gary?
Thank you. My question was if Anthem provides gap coverage, if people can apply, if there's someone out of network that they've been seeing and want to continue seeing, or if there's a, something specific, some surgery or something to that effect, that they need to see someone out of network? Do they have that option to apply?
Anything that you have currently through Anthem has not gone away. It's only enhanced, so that would still be in place. Typically, I believe you're describing what we, what I would consider transition of care, is that correct?
So I'm just asking if there's an out-of-network provision. So sometimes they call that gaps, and they would cover for a time if you need to see like a specialist that's not in network or something to that effect, or if there's someone they want to continue to see they've seen before on a different insurance plan. Do they have that ability to apply and be considered to see those providers?
Absolutely, that still applies with Anthem.
Thank you.
That's still in place, yes, thank you.
So I have questions specific to the prescription drug coverage. So did you guys run an analysis, and I asked this when we were talking about our retiree health coverage, did you run an analysis of prescription drugs that are currently being utilized by those enrolled in the plan?
Of prescription drugs that were, that were...
Like, let's say you have the insurance right now that we have, and you're on a specific drug. Did we run a list to see what drugs our people are using and kind of stack that up with where they rack and stack in regards to formulary and tier status on the new plan?
We did. So with the second offer in the pharmacy, you know, obviously Anthem formulary is staying the same. So from Anthem to Anthem, that is staying the same. So we did a tiered structure, and we do have an analysis in our detailed deck that we provided to HR, which goes through each tier structure and how those drugs move up or down a tier based on the second offer that provided their bids, yes.
And so what was that outcome? Like, I guess, what can our people expect in regards to differences? Because a tier two to a tier five is a huge difference, even a tier three. And what are the limitations, if you know them just off the top of your head? Is it a $55, $50 out-of-pocket cost when it goes from tier two to tier three? Is it $100, or does it then move into a co-insurance?
Yeah, the great news for the selection of Anthem is that no one will be moving tiers through this process, right? So the formulary stays the same, that is current through the next plan year. The formulary changes would just be normal changes that Anthem would do, you know, anyway in the course of business. It would not change just because of this new contract.
Okay, very good. And then I just really want to touch on this specialty tier part that you discussed. So you talked about a lot of these specialty drugs. So any drug that's basically over $1,500 is classified as a specialty tier drug and would be subject to a 30% out-of-pocket co-insurance. However, you did tout some of the co-pay assistance programs for the pharmaceutical manufacturers. Do you know what the criteria is, though, to enroll in those? Because a lot of them have income restrictions or insurance cap restrictions and would not allow you to participate in that. So what is there in place, instead of it being a 30% co-insurance on those most expensive drugs to make sure that we're not bankrupting people?
Oh, absolutely, and it's a great question. First off, anybody who is in those specialty drugs where the co-insurances go to 30%, and if for some reason they don't have the ability to get co-pay assistance, their cost is still zero through the Prudent RX.
Can you repeat that? Because that is a huge benefit that I guarantee you not a lot of localities have, or companies.
Yes.
So please say that very loudly into the microphone.
I will lift the microphone, yes. So anybody enrolled in the Prudent RX program who has that co-insurance increased to 30%, if they don't have the ability to get co-pay assistance, Prudent RX through that program still has a member cost share of $0, right? So there is no impact to the member, the impact would be to the plan.
So let's, let me just put that in layman's terms. You get cancer, you're in cancer treatment, oncology, you're on all kinds of oral medications and chemotherapy. Your bills would be hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of several months. You pay $0 as long as they're in the specialty tier.
Yeah, so, and I want to be clear, it's not all drugs in the specialty tier, right? It is select drugs that Prudent RX has identified have co-pay assistance programs available to them. And so it's a very specified program. So this, I want to be clear, the specialty drug cost share doesn't change for every specialty drug. It only changes for very specific drugs that are covered into that program.
Okay, and what are the classes of those drugs, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't want to speak to that.
It would be really nice to know, because the high-cost ones, and like, especially in diabetes, do we know where diabetes is covered? And I'd really like to know where, like, the most common insulin, which is Humalog. I mean, I have heard that some people on previous plans have paid $40,000 a year in out-of-pocket costs for insulin.
Exactly. Yeah, we can, through Anthem and Prudent RX, we can certainly get you that listing.
That would be really helpful.
And make sure you have that information.
And when do you need a decision from us on this as we move forward? I'm looking at Mr. Presley.
Coming back to you, both boards in their next meeting.
Okay, if you could give both boards that information, I think it would be really good, especially just for public transparency so that people can see which classes of drugs are covered and which ones aren't. Go ahead, Mr. English.
I see on here on your RFPs, I see where you've got the dental. You've got five proposals for dental. You've got two proposals for the drugs. But you only got one proposal for medical. Is that what, nobody else wanted to give you an RFP on that? Like, that's hard to believe.
Yeah, unfortunately, we did not get, we did not get proposals from anyone, anyone else.
I can weigh in on that, because we gave, our board, when we met last year, gave really specific guidelines and guidance that we wanted to minimize out-of-pocket costs for our people. We wanted things like what I was talking about, how you're not having specialty co-insurances and high out-of-pocket costs on commonly-used drugs. So that was something, we gave them very, very narrow guidance of how we want to do, expand this coverage. And I'm just very happy that you found somebody within that cost. So I think this is a huge benefit to our employees across the board.
To piggyback on her question about the drugs, is there, if that, if there are listed drugs, some people don't, is it some sort of rider that the person can buy? I mean, get on, say, that drug is not listed as high, but, you know, you can get a rider to say we can get on it? Is that optional for somebody to get into as a rider for that?
So to get onto the Prudent RX program?
Yeah, it's, yeah, mine's not on here, but it's on this one. But if I got a rider, I can...
Yeah, and the drugs would be by class. So it wouldn't be typically a situation where I'm taking this drug, but this other drug that's pretty much the same is on the list and it's not. So that's typically not the case. But if there, you know, if somebody is on a special drug, is taking a special drug that's not on the Prudent RX list, they'd have a separate co-pay under the current program that does not change to 30%. They'd stay on that program. There wouldn't be any ability to add that because Prudent RX does look at that for specific co-pay assistance.
All right, sorry for all the technical questions.
No worries.
This is just what I do. Anybody else? All right, very good.
Thank you so much.
All right, so that'll be coming back to both of our boards at our next meetings. Next on the agenda...
Madam Chair, just to clarification, it'll come back to our board on the 15th.
On the 15th, okay.
We've already set the agenda for the other...
Gotcha. So school boards, fiscal year 2023 local funding request. Is this, Dr. Taylor? Oh.
Computer, please.
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chairs and members of both the boards. It's really an honor to be with you and to represent the school board today as the new guy on the block, and this is week 11. Since it is our first day. Our time, then, you know...
...adorable as these kiddos are, and they really are, eventually we get to perform a magic trick, and we turn these guys into them. And this is a really, really important function, because these folks are the lifeblood of our community, and they are the folks that are our residents, our taxpayers, and the folks that make our local economy go, as well as the economies that surround us. But what happens when there's a crisis? And I know for a fact that you all have a lot of things that weigh in terms of requests that come to you. And what I would ask for you is to consider the harvest, not when we do the reaping, but consider the harvest when we do the planting. And think about the actions of our folks when we are trying to grow great adults that we want to have as next-door neighbors, because that's really one of our goals. And if I could measure our performance on just a handful of measuring sticks, I would say, we want to graduate kids in thirteen years, kindergarten plus one through twelve, right? We want to graduate them on time, and we want to make sure that all of our graduates are either enrolled, employed, or enlisted, every single one. Those are really good metrics. But I also want to make sure that those kids grow up to be the kind of adults that pull the trashcan in from the side of the street when you forgot it, because you were in a hurry, that they're the folks that pick up the newspaper and bring it to your front door, and they also grab the mail for you, too. That they are good people. And to me, that's really important, that we live in a community that supports that. And to that end, I want to make sure that should I ever find myself in a catastrophic event, or a terrible situation like this accident that's depicted here, that when somebody comes to get me out of a car with the jaws of life, I might reach out and grab their wrist and say, "Did you graduate from Brookpoint or Stafford High School and from our EMT program?" I hope so, because we've got really well-trained students. And our students are ready for that workforce, they're ready for enrollment, and they're ready to be enlisted. And I hope that that's the hallmark of our school system and what we bring to the table, and that we add value to this community in a very meaningful way. Since this is our first date, you get to learn a little bit about me and my personality and my leadership style, and the role that I serve with the school board as their executive. And there's a theme that I brought forward in my budget proposal, which is now a part of the school board's budget proposal, and that's to bring you responsible solutions. Not wild and crazy ideas with lots of huge numbers that don't make a whole lot of sense, but stuff that's reined in, and that's focused, and that's laser-focused on the stuff that really matters and that's really, really important. So with that, we have a handful of challenges that I want to touch on. One is recruiting and retaining absolutely great people, managing our growth, and then something that definitely drove the headlines this fall, getting the kiddos to school on time and getting them home on time, too, on-time transportation. So with that, I'm not going to read this list to you, you've got it in your packets and in your pamphlets, but here's a list of things that you really should be proud of. We serve over thirty thousand students in Stafford County Public Schools, we offer a wide variety of services, but we also serve, you know, nearly two million meals, or a little over two million meals, and drive over a million and a half miles a year. In effect, we are Stafford County Public Schools' largest restaurant chain. And I got to tell you, when I was going to school to become a social studies teacher, I did not think that I would be running the largest restaurant chain in Stafford County, but here we are. And I got to tell you, if you have a spare minute and you have some time to stop by lunch, it looks way better than it ever did when we were going through school. It's not even fair. These kids have no idea how good their school lunch is relative to what it used to be like. We are also one of the county's largest employers with forty-two hundred folks in our employ, and a little bit more than that if you count some of our contract staff. You have a lot to be proud of. Our students are excelling, we have one of the highest on-time graduation rates in the state, I think it can be better. We have student groups that do perform very well and have excelled in a number of fields that are very wide and deep, and that is something that you should be very proud of, because it is something that is important in our business is lighting the fire that becomes someone's passion, that eventually inspires them to be great adults, and that's really what we're all about. So I've got this big quandary, and the quandary that I've got is when somebody like me stands in front of a group of some folks like you, it's to whether or not to share some of the warts, and some of the not-so-great parts. And so I'm going to take a little bit of a risk here and share some of the not-so-great parts about Stafford County Public Schools. And I'll start with some of our performance. Now, I'm not a huge fan of SOL tests, but I will say this, every realtor is, and this is important. And even though it's one snapshot into how our kids perform and how our schools perform, it tends to be a pretty important one. And if you look at our comparison of our performance, and I picked basically all of our neighbors in Arlington, and I'll get to why I picked Arlington in a minute, but, well, I'll tell you right now, Arlington is the closest in size to us in terms of student population and the Commonwealth. They're also the closest in terms in performance. High-performing, medium-sized school district, just like Stafford County Public Schools. All the rest of those folks are neighbors. The problem with this is that we were performing pretty well, and the county was getting a pretty good return on its investment pre-pandemic. So you may be asking yourself, what's the problem with this? Well, nothing really, except for the fact that the five preceding years, there was a slow drip in terms of performance. Now, losing a point in your performance is not a big deal in one year, it's not. But when you lose a point every year for five years and no one's paying attention, that's a big deal. And that is something that we have to pay attention to. And our literacy performance is no longer leading, we're following. Fast forward to last year and the pandemic, and this is probably the part where you're saying, oh, my gosh, because our performance tanked. Well, so did everybody else's. But the challenge with us, and the part that concerns me very greatly, is that even though everybody tanked, we went from being at the top to being at the bottom. So our relative performance also went down, not just our actual performance. This is a serious, serious problem.
Supervisor Baumke has a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So Dr. Taylor, when looking at these numbers, now I try not to compare anybody to Arlington, because as we know, they pay more per pupil than anybody in the state. Not by a little, by a huge amount. Their tax base is very different. But setting that issue aside, how many of these school divisions were open during that time? Is there a comparison there?
Yes, and they had, each of them had a spotty open rate, just like we were. And Arlington, actually, interestingly enough, was closed for the majority of the time. Each opened at a different time, each opened, you know, with different expectations. You know, the only real strong outlier there is Fred City, and they're a very different school district than any of the other comparators. I don't like the fact that we are crowded at the bottom versus being isolated at the top. And so for me, this definitely creates some urgency and also some opportunity. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time with this, because Supervisor Baumke nailed it, okay? And don't be alarmed, because I will never, never recommend an Arlington per pupil expenditure, because I don't think that they spend their money very well. I think their problem is on the expenditure side, and it's almost like they have too much money that they don't know what to do with at all.
I have a quick question on this slide.
Yeah.
Is the capital improvement funding that we put, like for our high schools and middle school and elementary and all of the funding that we put in, is that calculated in the per pupil?
This is an apples-to-apples comparison, just for that reason, because different school districts compare differently. And we wanted to make sure that you had an apples-to-apples comparison. And again, I don't want us to get too hung up on this, because this is not as material to me as how we spend our money, not necessarily our top-line revenue. It's important, but how we spend our money, I think, is way more important than the top-line revenue. The comparison definitely has some issues, like there is a little bit of a correlation if you take out Fred City, in terms of some of the performance norms. That's troubling, but that's not the end of the day.
And then, just really quickly on that, just on the calculation...
Madam Chairman, if we could hold questions until Dr. Taylor does the presentation, he may address some of these issues as we go along, but we can allow some time at the end, but I think that would be more productive.
We usually keep an open dialogue and ask the questions when they come in.
Well, we don't usually get together, so I'm not sure we have a practice here.
All right, you can keep going.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
If you want to write your questions down there, hold them, we'll have time when Dr. Taylor finishes.
So to that end, I would make a strong and pretty compelling argument that Arlington probably doesn't get a great return on investment, that what they expend versus what they get is not particularly strong. So the question that we probably have to struggle with is, you know, where's that sweet spot? And how do we leverage our resources to get the best bang for our buck? So comparing a little bit and trying to keep it apples-to-apples, if we were funded at the same per pupil level as Spotsy, you know, we'd have twenty million dollars more in the bank. Prince William, closer to forty-five million. Falk Year, closer to eighty-two million. And if we were Arlington, we'd be double. And it is, it's laughable, because it just doesn't make sense. And, you know, there is this middle ground of where we should be focused at and where we should be targeting for top-line revenue that does make a little bit more sense. One of the confounding challenges that some of our neighbors aren't experiencing, and a real positive for Stafford County, is that we're also growing. People want to be here, because it is the place to be. It's a great community. That has its challenges, too. We are expecting an additional six hundred new friends to join us, as you, I'm sure, are not surprised by this. Our six hundred new friends don't show up all in one spot. If they did, that'd be great, because we just would build a school there, because that's about how many kids go into school. But they show up in various places throughout the county. So that's an advantage and a disadvantage in the sense that we then have to think about how we manage our growth, and you've got a presentation on that. So that's our struggles and a little bit of our pain point. Now I want to talk about what we're going to do about that and what some of our priorities are. This community, and one of the things that absolutely endeared me to Stafford County, is that this community has really high expectations, and that you want a great school system, and that you expect a great school system. Well, here's the keys to the kingdom on that: teacher quality matters. Any parent will tell you with great confidence that the one thing that matters is they better have that great teacher in that classroom for their kids. And truth be told, the research bears this out as well. If you have a great teacher in the classroom, your school will improve. If you have great leadership in the principal's office, your school will improve. You know, somewhere down on the list, it's keep the superintendent around, we'll talk about that later, but that's on the list as well. So please bear with me for just a hot second here, and this is a little bit of my wife's influence. So, and Fred had nothing to do with this, because my wife is a Mayner, and, you know, I don't know about folks south of Maine by comparison, and my wife is a lifelong Tom Brady fan. And by the way, you know something is serious when a school administrator uses a sports analogy. So here's what I'm going to go with. Basically, every time Brady, up until this upcoming year, because he's done, right, would drop back and throw the ball, sixty-two thousand dollars was his bank account. Now, he's a professional athlete, and that's what professional athletes do, and there's a lot of profile attached to that. But our first-year teacher works an entire year for forty-eight thousand dollars, and there's a bit of an inequity there. Matter of fact, you'd have to work twenty years in Stafford County to make what Tom Brady makes in just a few seconds. To make things a little bit more confounding is that that's not even his completion rate. He only has a sixty-seven and a half percent completion rate. I don't know about you, but if that was an SOL score, I don't know how Tom Brady stacks up on Team Stafford. He probably wouldn't make the A Squad. We probably would be looking for another quarterback. But unfortunately, per completed pass, Tom Brady makes ninety-three thousand dollars a year, which is off of our scale. So for context and impact, I think we can all agree that Tom Brady has tremendous impact on sports in the world and everything else, but our teachers have tremendous impact on the kids that they serve. And the investment in them is sometimes not necessarily commensurate to the value that they provide to the community. And I think you have a teacher on this board who would probably agree with you. Another struggle that we have is that we actually have a huge attrition problem, and it's an ongoing attrition problem. Our target should be around ten percent. That's a good attrition rate. That is, that's okay. Of the people that are leaving, about sixteen percent of them are retiring. That's not good. That means that eighty-four percent are quitting. And when one out of every five teachers is walking out of the door, that's a real problem. So that means that when Johnny becomes a kindergartner, by the time they're in fifth grade, one of their teachers has already gone. So we have some real struggles with this. And we ask our folks when they leave, why do they leave us? And it's three reasons. The number one reason overwhelmingly, by a margin of eight to two, is pay. No surprise there. The number two reason, which is way, way down the list ironically, is, any guess? Workload. Yeah, it's a complex landscape. And of course, the pandemic didn't help with that. It's a complex time to be a teacher. The third one, and I think this is universal to every profession, they hate their boss. Yeah, right? They don't like their supervisor. The fact that that's number three, when in almost every other profession that's number one, that's telling. So we definitely deal with that struggle. One of the things that is a challenge for us in terms of workload is substitutes, and making sure that we have adequate substitutes to cover our classrooms. We've done some really creative things, I think you all will be very proud of us. Pre-pandemic, we had a substitute pass rate, or substitute fill rate of ninety-three percent. We're down to eighty-three percent right now. That's not very good. What that means is that between thirty and forty classrooms every day go uncovered, which means it's left to the principal to figure that out. So that's effectively one classroom in every school in the district goes uncovered every single day, which means somebody, a reading specialist, a paraprofessional, an assistant principal, somebody is taken off of that responsibility and has to fill that void, and that's a challenge. One of the things that we figured out, because our highest-volume day was Friday, is we created a system of premium pay for Fridays. So think about it like this: if you've ever taken an Uber, and it costs you one dollar amount on one day, but then during rush hour, it costs you twice as much, well, that's what we're doing for substitutes on Fridays. So we pay our substitutes a premium to work on Fridays as a consequence. Huge advantage has increased our substitute fill rate in the short period of time that we've been doing it, which is two Fridays. Okay. Support for our staff, this is going to continue to be an ongoing dialogue. We didn't put a whole lot in this particular budget for our support staff, because we do want to focus on how we might support our license scale better this year, and then focus on this other group next year in greater detail. We can't get everything all in one time. I will never ask you for everything all at one time. I don't think that that makes sense. I think that we need to take a bite of the apple, one bite at a time, not all at once. That doesn't make sense. So what we will do is we'll take a hard look at these folks in future years, not just in this year. An important part, probably one of my favorite statistics, is that our people live here. This is an expensive place to live, but our people live here. They're committed to this community, and to have our employees be a part of this community, be taxpayers and be constituents in this community, we're doing better than our neighbors. And I think that that is high value, because it means that they want to raise their families here, too. We have other needs, as you well know, getting the kids to school on time. We have other needs, as you well know, getting the kids to school on time, our aging infrastructure and some of our growth issues. I'm going to let my colleagues deal with that soon enough. So now let's get to the actual solutions. Well, revenue in our projected budget that's before you, that was adopted last night by the school board, we're bringing you a budget that is reasonable. And in our eyes, we are looking at right around 25 million in state aid. And based on the county administrator's budget, about $8 million in revenue on that side. And that frees us up to do a lot. And I will say that we very strategically focused on just a handful of things, not a whole lot of things. I'm not going to ever give you this long 20-page laundry list of stuff. One, because I don't think that that is smart, and I don't think that that is focused, and I don't think that that aligns with our goals. I want to hone in on the things that will matter most and give us the biggest bang for the buck. We're not a school system of things. We're a school system of people. This is probably one of the best ratios in the state in terms of where we put our money. It's about 14% keeping the lights on, keeping the buses running and keeping the plates full of food. And the 86% of the rest of it goes to the people that run the show behind the scenes. Our budget is broken up into six parts. So in your folder, if you would do me the courtesy, there's one document that I want you to hang on to. And it's the first document in the left side of your folder. And it's a new document that you maybe haven't seen before. And this is 100% Thomas formatting. So I apologize if this is something that looks new to you. But this is how I like to format things because I think it makes sense. The first section is revenue, so that you can see where every nickel goes. Yes, ma'am? You know what? We should have brought spare readers. That would have been great. You know what? If we could add a little line in the budget, that's about $40 for readers, for board members, we'd just throw that in there at the end. So really, just the sections, and I'm going to keep this really simple, is revenue. The next section that you're always going to see from me, and evidently this is a novelty for Stafford County, is I cut the base budget. Evidently, that's new here. Well, I think we actually need to look at the base budget every year. And this is one of the ways that I feel like we can build trust, is to know that we are going to look at our base budget on an annual basis and that we're going to take that very seriously. And we're going to assess what we've spent in previous years and how we might hone that to be a little bit tighter. And the next section after that is the section that this slide reflects, which is our non-discretionary funds. So all of these expenditures are about keeping the lights on, but with 600 more kids. So you may ask yourself, what would it cost to do everything that you're doing this year, again, next year, but with 600 more kids? The answer, $12 million. So that includes things like health care cost increases. That includes maybe fuel increases. That includes fleet services. That includes workman's comp fund. That includes a whole host of things. There's the laundry list. Cyclical replacement of assets. This is just how we keep the cost of doing business, is a good way of thinking about this. The smallest portion of this budget is the next section, which is discretionary funds. And this is literally the things that, what we have with funds that are left over that would put us in a strategic advantage and that would give us a little bit of a competitive edge in accomplishing some of our goals. The first one, it's a big top-line item, and I want to go into detail to explain this one, is licensed staff compensation. You can loosely refer to this as teachers. Teacher salaries. Not adding more teachers, just teacher salaries. The next one is non-licensed. That's all the support staff. That's everybody from bus drivers to principals and central office staff and everybody who supports teachers in the background. They get a flat 5%. No creative compensation strategy with that. Again, I'll talk about the teachers in a second. Change to substitute compensation, transportation improvements. I'm just going to make that really simple. That's 15 bus drivers. Why 15 bus drivers? We can shave a significant amount of our transportation time if we go to three tiers instead of four tiers of busing. Big improvement. Get the kiddos to school on time. A couple of additions from what I proposed to the school board, to the school board's adopted budget, is adding school-based differentiated funding. If I had one more thing in my, one more arrow in my quiver, this is probably what I would tackle. Because this is an area where we nickel-and-dime our parents on a regular basis. You know, make sure you have a bottle of hand sanitizer and a roll of toilet paper and a box of crayons and all that stuff. Stop the madness. We really should be financing our classrooms a little bit better. And we can put some money in the principal's bank account to make sure that those things get covered necessary. And we can differentiate this based on the level of need in each school. The last one is something that I think you all will really, really be proud of and really be excited about, is how might we get to some of the larger major maintenance projects that we have and how might we build a fund over time? Again, I'm never going to bring you something that's a complete solution all in one year, but rather an iterative solution that we can build to over time. We should be financing our major maintenance projects somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.5% to 2% of the value of our assets every year for major maintenance. What that translates to us would be somewhere between $15 and $20 million every year. If you look at our CIP, that kind of tracks because that's about what some of the projects total up to, except that we're not financing that. We're taking out a debt service, which to me is like, I'm ready to pull my hair out. And I'm already losing a big patch in the back. And that could go very quickly. So why not just put that into the operating fund over time and grow it over time slowly? I think that that's the smart play. It's a responsible way. And it definitely honors our commitment to taking care of the assets that we have. So now let's talk about the teacher scale, and then I'm going to button this up and get to the important stuff, which is the questions. The top line right there represents the salary structure for Prince William County Public Schools. We are never going to compete with them on price. I would make a compelling reason that maybe even we shouldn't compete with them on price. Because they cap at their 15th year of experience, at their step 15, they cap. So really, where we need to be competitive is up to 15. Because beyond that, you can't break into the system, okay? So why should we compete at the top of their scale when really we should be competing on the front half of their scale? Not to ever make light of a neighbor who's struggling, but our friends to the south of us are not having a super great time at the moment. And there is an opportunity for us to get some really high-qualified educators to join Team Stafford. And so the bottom line there is representative of Spotsylvania County. The red line is us. The top line is Prince William County. And the dotted line is a proposed modification to our salary structure. And if you're wondering, how'd you come up with that, Thomas? I took a look at what you did a couple of years ago for public safety, and I basically mirrored that but scaled it back a little bit. So what I'm asking for is a salary scale that looks like the salary scale that you put together for public safety, but scaled back a little bit. Instead of going with a slope of 3% for the first half of the scale, we're going to do that iteratively over the next few years. Maybe take us five years to get where we want to go. Not a one-and-done. Because right here, what I have is proposing a 3% slope for years 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and then a 1.5% slope thereafter. And then we can tackle another chunk, and then another chunk, and then another chunk, and be done with it. This would put us in a tremendous competitive advantage relative to our neighbors. And it would also position our teachers in a much better place by decompressing some of the issues in the salary scale for our folks. I'm going to close by giving you a little bit of a glimpse to the future that's really important to me and how I think moving forward makes a whole lot of sense. I think it's a little silly for me to share a salary scale just year one when, in truth, I've really got a five-year salary scale for you to consider and that we could bite this off in smaller chunks. I think it's really important that you receive a five-year operating budget from the school system every year and not a singular one-year budget. I don't think that that captures all of the ideas that we have on how we could make the school system better. I think that the school system is in desperate need of consistent staffing standards. And I think that as we look at salary improvements, that we do it in a strategic fashion, like what we're proposing this year, and not try to do everything all at one time. The inside of that little pamphlet is literally a list of budget requests from various departments and schools. Some of them are great ideas. Some of them are good ideas. Some of the ideas are meh. Well, in a five-year budget, you might see some of those landed iteratively over the next five years. Some you might see not ever, ever, ever again. What we want to introduce to you is the opportunity to imagine what the school system could look like down the road and to spend some time in the three-on-three and chair, vice-chair, and one-on-one meetings talking about things that excite you and how we might better serve our constituents in a more meaningful way. So that's where I'm going to stop because capital improvements is up next. And, Madam Chairs, I'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
We'll open it up to Ms. Allen first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, for your presentation. Obviously, because of the length, I had several questions, so they're not too long. The first one I had is, if there's a gap in the per pupil expenditure for roughly the past five years, will the school board and will your administration be requesting that money within every budget to make up that gap instead of further widening the differences?
Thank you. As important as I think it is to find the right per pupil expenditure, I'm really more interested in your board getting excited about what we're spending the money on and finding value in that, rather than picking an arbitrary top-line revenue like, gosh, we really should be a $13,000-per-student district. And I'd be like, why? You know, I would want to know what we'd want to spend that on and why, and give you a really compelling reason and list of needs that would line up with that before picking just this number out of a sky that lines up with what we think that the per pupil expenditure should be. So it's almost like we should start from where our needs are and build up to that before we just say, we really need more money. Because I don't think that that's the right approach. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that makes a whole lot of sense. We should start with what our needs are. I have grave concerns about, you know, what our staffing looks like in our buildings relative to, you know, filling some of those positions and making sure we can keep the folks that we have. About half of our folks have less than five years' worth of experience. And if you put this into context, think about it for a second. When we were going through school, what was the average age of a teacher? 112, yeah, right? Okay?
Mine was 25.
Okay, well, I'm going to cut to the chase. They were typically your parents' age, late 30s, early 40s. Nowadays, the average age of a teacher is 27. The difference is, your mom at the front of the classroom, different classroom management style. Or your older sister who comes home from Thanksgiving. Okay? Like, very, very different approach to instruction. Now, I'm not saying that the value of the younger teacher is poor or anything like that. I'm going to say it's a very different experience and that there is some value in having a practiced hand and having folks stay in the industry a little bit longer and stay with us a little bit longer because the impact can be more significant when they figure out how to manage a classroom and they actually know how all of this works, and they're not guessing at it.
Well, my second and last question, it has two parts. The first part is, will your salary scale hedge to the cost of living? Because once you've established that, are you going to make sure the raises that you're asking for has that component to it?
Yes, so I think once we get the salary scale in a mutually happy place, I think there's only one number that you have to tweak from there on, and that's your starting rate because everything cascades up after that. So I think that narrowing our discussion point to just one number versus having to discuss the starting salary, the distance between each steps, the slope of the line, and all of these other things that could be negotiating discussion points, I think is noise and distracts away from, just find a way to have a system, and then your focal point really begins, what's your attractive starting salary? And then everything cascades beyond that.
And my last part of that question is, how are you going to deal with, because you're saying that your biggest driver is staffing, but how are you going to deal with the great exit? I'm married to a teacher. He's been teaching since he was 22. He quit two weeks ago. Not because of his performance. He was rated highly effective, but he had enough. His grade alone at his school, five teachers quit between August and January 2022 in the third grade. So it is a serious concern. And it's not just the great exit, but from what I'm told also, you have the counties to the north. Although you're saying that we don't need to catch up to Prince William, well, DC is offering, and it's, you know, a ridiculous raise, all into this offering. You have the trickle-down effect where all the counties to the north of us are peeling teachers off from each other. So how are you going to make sure that Stafford County can stay competitive? Because our teachers are going to go, you know what I mean?
We have a wonderful advantage. This is a great place to live, work, and learn. And I think our value proposition is different than Prince William County. And this is nothing against Prince William County. This is nothing against Fairfax or, you know, whatever those folks are north of us, okay? But I think that our value proposition is that we are going to take our teachers very seriously and their work environment very seriously. That we are going to treat our folks like professionals. That we are going to make an effort to come up with a system that compensates fairly, that has a reasonable projection year over year. I think one of the pain points that our folks have been really struggling with is with the salary compression that we've had over the last 15 years. And let's think about it. We can trace this all back to the housing market bubble. And at the same time as the housing market bubble, we also had the Affordable Care Act. So not only do we freeze teacher salaries and only do percentage increases, but we also hit their take-home pay with increased health insurance. And Stafford County is leading the way by trying to offset that by not making that hit the wallet of the take-home pay for the employee. That's a huge benefit, but that's not how it was on the onset. And so we've never quite recovered from that. So it's like, how do we come up with a system that gives people hope and that gives people a logical future that they can aspire to and something visible that they can latch on to versus, I make the same amount as I did as a first-year teacher 15 years ago, and somebody who's just starting almost makes the same amount as somebody that's been here for 15 years, which is the dynamic that we have right now. So we're trying to write a few of the ship components right now. We're not going to write all of the ship in one day, but we are trying to put some of the building blocks in place so that we can build on it over time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. And first, I want to say thank you for being here, Dr. Taylor. I appreciate your five-year operating budget plan idea. And I hope you carry that out. I think that's phenomenal. We've been doing that here in Stafford County just since the beginning of Tom Foley, when Fred was under him. And it has made a huge difference. And I really like your analytical budget and how you think about what's going on in the school division. So, and I did want to let people know, Dr. Chase is teaching a class tonight, so that's why she's not here. Okay, my first question is, underlying item, compensation healthcare increase, $1,009.66. You have the annual projected increase there of 13.9%. Increase in employer's share to eliminate impact on employee. What was that before and what is up to the 13.9%? And do you have a marketing plan to let our employees know that when they're looking at the compensation between other localities in Stafford, that can be a deal breaker and that can be a game changer?
I'll speak to the marketing piece afterwards, but go for it, Chris.
Yeah, sure. So to clarify, we actually built our health- So to, to clarify, we, we actually built our health benefits fund budget, you know, weeks ago, months ago, before we had our final results back from Aon. Now, coincidentally, they line up pretty closely. We were, have seen some increases in the last couple of years, even after we've had several years of pretty consistent healthcare expenditures. But we really need to wait until now that we've selected Anthem or moving in that direction, obviously, that Anthem will come up with a new projection based on, this was Aon's projection that they presented, and their total expenditures is matching up pretty closely, but we currently have budgeted, which includes this increase. So there might still be some adjustments to that. I don't think it's going to be very large adjustments, but we will wait until Anthem provides us a little bit more feedback directly from their actuaries.
So will the school employee see an increase or a decrease?
No, school employee premiums are staying flat.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. And then my last question is regarding down under discretionary expenditures, compensation, the license scale, the $20 million number for moving teachers up the scale. There's a note there that says correction to the teacher's scale, salary scale, ranging between five percent and nineteen percent increases, representing 2,200 employees. So that's over half of our employees on the school division. Tell me what that correction is. How did that occur?
Sure.
I remember looking at a sheet that Chair, Dr. Chase shared with me a couple of years ago, and before I can hit the I believe button on that, I've got to see an Excel spreadsheet of seeing what's actually mechanically happening to these 2,200 employees, if you will.
Absolutely. And if we could bring the, the slide deck back up, I'll, I'll try to... So effectively, what's happening here is the bottom red line is our current salary structure. The top line is what's proposed. And the distance between zero years of experience and one year worth of experience on this credited scale is five percent. So it's effectively a two percent increase plus a three percent step because it's in that first part where you see the slope is a little bit higher. And that pulled out over time. Once we get to step five, we then change the slope and flatten it back out again to one and a half percent. Well, right now, as it stands, there's virtually no slope in our current salary structure. And so it's relatively flat and it sags in the middle. Now, the vast majority of our employees are really in that first chunk. Almost half of our, our teacher employees are between step zero and step five. So that's actually where the most significant group is, but it's also not the most significant percentage increase. The folks that are going to realize the most significant percentage increase are actually around step fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And that's actually not a, a huge number of employees, but what it does is it snaps them back to that line, and you'll see the percentage starts to then converge a little bit, and that percentage starts to, to get a little bit tighter at the top. Because we're not trying to blow the scale out of the water. What we're trying to do is we're adding structure to it.
Right. So I remember we were looking at doing this over a period of time. With this 20 million, have you all compressed that time period? What is the time period that you have these numbers projected such that it's 20 million in this upcoming fiscal year?
I, I would probably think, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to, to cast shade on, on any previous administration or, or anything along those lines. I think you have some circumstances that provide an opportunity, and I also think you have some circumstances to do things a little bit differently. I would think about this as maybe step two or really step one of a, of a much longer timeline, not beginning, not, not in the middle of a five-year timeline, but maybe restarting a five-year timeline. One of the challenges, and I think you all know this because you, you experienced this with your public safety scale, adding percentages, you're just exacerbating the problem. And so I think one of the, the problems with the previous administration and previous recommendations to the boards has been that they were, in effect, by adding percentages, making the problem worse over time. So when we use the term correction, we mean that precisely, is that we are in fact trying to correct a problem, and this is the, probably the most significant bite to take out of that because we are doing the first bump, but that bump has a cascading effect over time. Any future changes would have to be smaller corrections to the slope. They would too also have a cascading effect, but much less significant in terms of salary increases downwind over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor English?
I've got a couple of questions. How, what's the, how long does a teacher stay in the school system? How long, what's the average teacher stay?
About four and a half to five years.
That's the average. And then how many years do you think it's going to, how many years would it take to top out on this new scale that you, how many years would it take?
Thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years to top out. All right. And the other thing, how much are you paying your substitute teachers a year? What are the, what's the rate?
They're, they're on a daily rate.
So what is that?
And you'd have to, you'd have to tell me, Chris, the, the precise amount. It is different on Fridays. And that was...
And I apologize, I don't know the precise amount either. I believe it was around, our daily normal substitute rate was around 120, 130 dollars a day.
Yeah, just over 100 dollars.
And then we, we've bumped it up since then.
So you don't know what it is?
Not off the top of my head, not the new Friday premium rate.
All right, I want to know.
I want to say it's about 190, actually.
Okay. And the other, and the other question, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but in the past years, has, has there ever been any leftover monies at the end of, end of your budget? And if it is, what's, what is it?
Sure.
And it's got to be, so you can't just say you're going to hold.
What would be considered responsible in a budget the size of ours, you should, should, should have at least a half a percent, all the way up to three percent of your budget in annual savings, everything from salary savings, everything from unfilled positions and positional savings, you know, small fragments of each line that don't get spent. And so you should have at least a percent of, or half a percent to three percent of your budget left over. Last year, Chris, we had...
A little over one percent.
So you don't give that money back to the county?
Actually, we do.
You do? Okay.
And then we re-approached.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Yep.
Any other supervisors have questions?
Supervisor Young, go ahead.
Okay, certainly. I want to start off by saying that, given teachers, what they deserve is not a problem. I think I heard you say a problem. It is an honor to meet some of these teachers and the staff. They're my neighbors, and they're our constituents, so I want to let them know how much I appreciate them. When you talk about previous superintendents, the step, scale, I think this one is a slope? Yeah? I'm good at math.
It's a, it's a step scale. It's very similar to what you have for public safety.
And so I guess you changed the approach. And so the, the fact is that the first year, second year, third year, fourth year, fifth year, that they leave, they get their experience here and they leave for whatever reasons. But training and leaving them, why, is this the best way that, to do it? That, that's my first question.
That's a great question, actually. And if we could bring the, the slide deck back up, that would be helpful. Thank you. So the right place to start is where really we can create a foundation, but then also to incentivize the group that probably needs the most incentive to stay, which would be that, that first chunk. So we added by starting at the very beginning of the scale, by making the, a steeper incline at the very beginning, and to add to that over time. So almost like you're creating a cohort of employees that you're hoping to carry through over time. And, and realistically, we're making everybody way more competitive. That's happening by, by this proposed scale, without, without question. But we're certainly making that first group that, that has a propensity to leave us way more competitive. And so we are competing for that first group. And then I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any mystery of this. Next year, I'll come back to the same body, making a recommendation that the slope be increased for the next couple of steps beyond that, so that we're, we're tracking this over time and building a foundation, so that it mirrors very closely to what public safety has, almost identical is what I would prefer.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Second question? Oh, nope.
No, you're good.
Okay. So you, you mentioned that money is not the only reason for them staying, of course, or even leaving. So some of them are leaving because of politics or maybe other reasons. How are you planning on replacing them? What, what is your plans or your strategy for that teacher retention?
So a couple of different questions. Retention, for sure, I think has a lot to do with two big factors. The, the two big factors are the work environment and compensation. This takes a giant stab at work environment, excuse me, it takes a big stab at compensation. Work environment, we're looking to tackle in a couple of different ways. We are looking at, at a more endemic structure to COVID-19, which will help tremendously. That, that alone, I think, will have a significant improvement. Having, and making sure that folks have a substitute when they need a substitute is a huge benefit and probably one of the top complaints that some of our teachers have. If you have a student in our school system, you probably are familiar with the term concurrent teaching. Let me explain what this is if you're unfamiliar with it. What it basically means is that when we have a kid who is ill or quarantined or on a voluntary virtual status, they are at home and they are learning from their computer and seeing the teacher in class, while the teacher is teaching the class in the classroom. This is a tremendous strain on our teachers, and it's a tremendous strain on the work environment. That needs to be a thing of the past. This will be a huge, huge improvement to the work environment that we can provide. So, you know, I, I hope that we come out of this pandemic a lot smarter and a lot better off than we were before. I think one of the lessons that we would learn is, you know, what makes sense and gives a higher return on our investment? Concurrent teaching is not one of them. And so that's something that I think that we can easily commit to taking off of teachers' plates. Another thing that we can easily commit to is, is doubling down on our substitute strategy and making substitutes available so that when folks need to take off, they actually take off and they actually have a qualified person in the room to support them. And then we need to, to get the pay scale in a place that, that we can grow over time. So I think that those are, are thing, are ways that we can focus on retention. In terms of recruitment, we do have some advantages. Looking at the geographies to our south, they are definitely making pay scale improvements. If we can be competitive, we have a lot more in terms of services that we can offer. In terms of our neighbors to the north, we offer a very different work environment than just being another number in Fairfax or Loudoun County or in Prince William. We are a home. We are a place where someone can grow and where we can commit to fostering our teachers as professionals.
I have two more questions. One of the things I like about you is that you have a memory bank, be able to decipher the questions and hold them for the answers. I like that. Thank you so much for that. Based on your answers, and I had this as a question, but you all already answered it, the plan for virtual ongoing, and did you budget for it? So it sounds like that's going to be a thing of the past, but you know there are going to be parents that are going to be looking out for this. And it is an advantage if students are sick, that they are going to be able to have some kind of opportunity to still get some kind of work done. And that's one of the things that when we implemented having internet cafes, is y'all going to put my name to some of this stuff? That, that is something that I would hope that continues. One more question, Madam Chair. You mentioned the $12 million, and that's base. Does that include where we were pre-COVID? Or are you looking at that right now? Because then that would be incorrect.
This would just be our ongoing expense. Like, if we were to add 600 more kids, because most of them are here already, what would it take for us to keep the school system running, effectively doing the same things that we're doing now, but with 600 more kids? Well, obviously, we would need more gas, we would need more buses, we would need, utility costs are going up, we have a whole host of things, and so that's what we detailed there for you.
Okay. And my last question, the three tiers that you mentioned, does that include changing the bell time?
Yeah, the board is considering that right now, is taking a look at the instructional schedule. Going to three tiers would allow for an adequate amount of time in between each bell. I mean, I hate to say it like this, but we almost set ourselves up for failure, having 45-minute bus routes, but only 35 minutes to complete them. It's like we were planning to not be on time. So having an adequate amount of time in between middle, high, and, you know, elementary school does, does make a significant difference. And, and it would allow for that turnaround time. And if we did have longer routes, we would just know that there would not be a bus route that would follow that to the next tier. It would skip a tier and go to the third tier. So making sure that we have that, I think, is going to make a significant difference.
Thank you so much. And that, that is just, it wasn't just a guess, so don't send me any emails, send them to Ms. Sigmund over there. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Cohen, and then Ms. Gary, and then I'll have a couple of questions, and then we'll turn it over to the schools.
Yes, very, thank you very much, sir. Very nice presentation. A couple of things. I believe if my memory and/or information is correct, daily sub is 120 a day, long-term is 146, and then the Friday bonus is 146. So if I have any really long, loads of questions, I can, I know where, I can send them this promo, or I can just hand it to somebody who parks two spaces away from me, and they will take care of it.
That works.
But one of the wrinkles is, and if you, any of you want a real person's understanding of the bell situation, please come and see me, because my kids are suffering from it in the high school level. But many, many superintendents ago, they tried to bump it up, the pay for the newbies, and a bunch of us veterans, old people, said that won't work, and none of the people who were in that time, who got those extra pay, are in my building anymore. So that's one thing to be cognizant of as going forward. The, the people who have been here 15, 17, 30-plus years are still in the system at the pay that's way below Prince William, and now we couldn't get hired by Prince William because we're too old. But the newbies, who were under that little thing and got those bonuses, have all left. So that's one thing, is you, you're going through implementing this to be cognizant of, so, but I'm bothered.
Not, not a huge fan of bonuses.
Bonus of pay, then?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that I'm ever going to advocate for you to throw away your money. I think that you should invest and get a return for that investment. And I think that the strength in what I'm proposing is that we're not focusing just on new people, is that it has a cascading effect down, down the road. And, but I appreciate that, Mr. Cohen. Thank you.
And I'll add, Mr. Cohen, I think we heard you and we heard the other experienced teachers, and that's why you see this revised scale.
Yep.
Supervisor Gary?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to say, I have seven children and five of them are still in the school, so this is all...
Very real.
Triggering me.
She's getting a really good ROI on her property taxes.
It's a little triggering. I mean, we've had the bus issue, we've had the retention issue. I had a child, have a child, but she was in first grade, when she was in first grade, she had five teachers in the same year. This is not uncommon, unfortunately. I mean, there are other parents who have a change, a turnover of somewhere from three to five teachers once someone does quit or leave for some reason. I think originally, her teacher was getting married, wonderful thing, but then it was like flip, flip, flip through the rest of the year. So obviously, that's very frustrating, it was very disruptive to her education, so I'm glad that you are honing in on that and want to solve that issue. And on that, I wanted to ask, because during last year, I tried to have the conversations with people who are running for the school board and already on the school board and our teachers in the community, and adding that to my pool of knowledge about, you know, being a parent in this school system. And something that kept coming up was the inability for teachers to express themselves to their superiors and get things dealt with. And I was wondering if you had, you don't have to answer me now, but just as an idea that came out of all of that, considered third-party assessments to where your teachers can actually, yes, can actually express themselves and have those concerns addressed because they're not feeling heard and because quality of, of work-life is so important to retention. I think that's something that we should invest in, as you've mentioned, that would be a lot less detrimental to our wallet, but better impact our retention than just throwing money at people. We say, what's going on? Let them talk. Have someone review those things that are not their immediate superior, so they don't feel like they can't express themselves. feel like they can't express themselves. So I just wanted to share that and ask if that was an option on the table you had considered.
Right there with you. That is not a budget ask because it is something that we're implementing immediately. And I got to tell you, that's a really astute observation and that kind of taps into that third reason why people leave us. There's two ways to really improve a school environment. Have great teachers, number one, hands down. Number two, have a great principal. And how do you make sure that you have a great principal? Because I got to tell you, when I go into a school and when we go and visit schools together, because that's what we're going to do, right? Is, you know, we get the Hawthorne effect. Like we show up and everybody's on their best behavior and, you know, we don't, we don't get to see the real side of like everything that's going on. It's a lot of sunshine and smiles and, oh my gosh, you know, the supervisors are here and, you know, Thomas is here and the school board's here and everybody gets excited and we don't get the real talk. So we are doing a climate survey and it is going to employees. And we are also contemplating whether or not to have one for secondary students. Because we think that there's also a tremendous value that our students can tell us about their learning environment and about their school environment as well. We dabbled in that a little bit. We did a transportation survey and a bell schedule survey where we got 10,000 respondents from parents, got about 2,000 respondents from our employees, and we got about 5,000 respondents from students. And the student responses were great. I mean, they told us a lot. They also told us that they wanted to show up at 10 o'clock and leave at 2:00. Small detail. But, but the other qualitative stuff is really good. And so I think the more that we incorporate that voice and people feel heard and that there's off-ramps, not just for the confidential, you know, dump of like, oh my gosh, I can't take it anymore, there's this, 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 and this going on. But also the off-ramps for someone to make a direct, you know, conversation that is productive, that leads to tangible outcomes and that people feel valued in giving their contribution. I think that's super important. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so I think all the supervisors have gone, so now it's my shot. If you could just send us an email on how you calculated the per pupil expenditure numbers, I think just the equation that you used and sort of any growth numbers that you use, like capacity in the schools to generalize that. And then we can ask you any questions that we might have just in the interest of time because I know we still have to go through the school's capital needs. Another question I had, on the slide that you talked about, the additional investment this year and you said you boiled it down to, what will it take to do exactly what we're doing now with 600 additional students? So I broke that per pupil expenditure down and that's about $20,000 per student. Can you explain the difference as to why now it would be $20,000 per additional student versus the 10,000, what, 373?
Because not all of that is encompassing just the 600 students. Because some of those expenses are district-wide. That being said, you also have some very targeted things there, like the top line right there is about personnel. For an additional 600 students, you're really looking about 60 personnel to cover that. That's everything from special education to ESOL to general ed and a whole host of things. The tough part with that is that when you add kids not into one location, you don't get to capitalize on any economies of scale because they're scoped out all over the place and they may kick over a class size by one and that triggers a new FTE. Or they may kick over a caseload by one and that triggers a new FTE. That part is a little bit painstaking. So you, I get what you're saying and it does make sense, but those are really district-wide expenses, just the cost of doing business. Like our utility bill is about just the expense of the entire district's utility bill going up, not just for the 600 kids.
And so do you have all those details broken down into the budget? Maybe you could share those with the board?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like if it kicks somebody over per class, then we could kind of see that that's why it's doubled.
Yeah, so some of that is largely going to depend on when and where the kids actually show up. Something that grieves me significantly and why you don't have a long laundry list of staff requests. As a matter of fact, this is a conversation that the school board had last night where I asked the school board to pull back some of their staff requests before coming to you, is I really would like to get a handle on what our staffing standards look like because I'm very, very concerned and confused when I go into some schools. And I see some inequities in terms of why does this school have a certain number of people in this classroom and a certain number of people in this classroom? And that is something I feel like I need, I owe it to you to do a deeper dive in that before I ask for more people. I don't ever want to come to you and say, I really need a dozen XYZ. And the truth of the matter is, I'm sitting on a dozen XYZ and I didn't know it. I want to know it before I ask you for it.
Gotcha. And then my last question, which has nothing to do with the budget, but it was something that we heard a lot from constituents and also bus drivers as a part of the reason that a lot of drivers were leaving, is universal disciplinary actions. We've heard a lot about different schools will discipline children differently. Have you addressed that at all with this new school board so that if you commit this crime, you get this time and so that it's universal applicable to everyone versus it being swept under the rug in some locations versus others? Because I think that's very demoralizing to bus drivers and to educators.
Yeah, we've got, we got a lot of work to do in that space. And no, it's not something I've discussed with the board directly, but I know that I've had one-off conversations with board members about this topic. And I'm going to boil down a couple of scenarios that I think are worth thinking about. And I'm not trying to draw it back to money, although I'm completely trying to draw it back to money.
Well, that's why I asked it during the budget work session.
Yeah, not during the budget work session per se, but, you know, it kind of does go back to what our teacher makeup does look like. And I mean, I'm not trying to disparage our younger teachers because they add a lot of value and they add a lot of really different skillsets than what we've had before in terms of how they utilize information and data, how they utilize assessment and how they differentiate instruction. They're really much better at it. But they are not great at classroom management. Actually, not great at it at all. And I think a lot of it has to come with, and this is one of our warts. I mean, to be completely transparent, this is an issue of ours. Is that, is that this is a huge area for us to improve. And I'm trying to be a little cheeky when I say this. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody, but coming off of a year of virtual instruction to come back a little feral, too. And they need a lot of work, too.
I can't even imagine.
So, you know, we've got, we need to work on a lot of different fronts. Another area of weakness of ours that we need to spend some time working on is the teacher relationship. And Madam Chair, I do appreciate you giving us a little bit more time, but I think that this is important. Is the teacher relationship with parents and having that bridge be a little bit more solid than it has been in recent years so that the parent and the student are on the same page and the parent is on the same page with what is happening in the classroom? Why is something happening and what the consequences need to be when something doesn't go according to plan?
And I think when you started this conversation, you talked about building trust between the boards. That is probably one of the biggest things that you can do, even though it has nothing to do with the budget. It's building that relationship with the parent and the student. And then I think that the trust will come within the boards because people come to us and they tell us these stories and they've kind of fallen on deaf ears in the past. So I think, at least where I sit, that's my opinion. Okay, so Supervisor Bumpey always has to have the last word. So she has one question and then we're going to turn it over to the CIP.
That's quick, which is good.
Okay, perfect.
I just wanted to state that I'm sure that you know, the only way that you will get a climate survey with real results, because the county went through this five or six years ago, is when you have it go back to a consultant and not to the HR IP address.
Yep, I couldn't agree more.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Now, capital improvement, go ahead.
Computer, please.
Hold 30 seconds.
No, 20 minutes. I think it was scheduled for 7:00, right?
That's right, because you guys have somebody on Jeopardy tonight. Did you record? I hope you recorded it. It's their head of HR is on Jeopardy tonight. Yes. What's his name again?
Patrick Kornack.
Yes.
No, he's simply, tonight will be his debut tonight. We're very excited for him. He's a great guy and just an outstanding contributor to the team and just super smart.
What time is Jeopardy? 7?
7:30.
Is it 7:30? Wheel of Fortune's at 7:00, right?
I guarantee Patrick would have known our daily substitute rates off the top of his head. So I was very close, but he would have known them.
Okay. Are we ready? Capital needs. Hopefully, it's less slides than Dr. Taylor.
All right, so I guess, good evening, everyone. I'm Lionel White, Director of Facilities Planning in GIS. To my side here is Mr. John Anderson. He's the Executive Director of Facilities. The planning team is going to present to you the school board's capital needs. But before I present the capital needs, we'd like to share some background information with you with regards to our enrollment projections, residential, active residential developments and projected growth. And I'm going to move fairly quickly just to, because I know I don't have that much time. So this chart shows you past, present and future enrollment. The areas, the bars in gray show us past enrollment growth over the past decade. And we've grown 3,100 students over the last 10 years. And you'll notice on the chart that in between 2020 and 2021, that there was an increase. That's because there was a bounce back from the COVID year. So you'll see in the chart there that red arrow pointing downward. That was a loss of students with COVID, but we gained 1,000 students year over year. So we're back to where we were before, essentially. And then lastly, the areas in blue are the 10-year projections, which suggest that we're going to grow 5,800 more students over the next decade. Well, question maybe, well, why are we growing? One of the key contributors besides migration is active residential development. And this map shows you active residential development in the county. This is as of February 1st, 2021. You can see that growth isn't just concentrated in one portion of the county, it's sort of spread all over the place. Key statistic with this, there are 85 active developments in the county as of that date I gave you with 5,700-plus vacant lots. The other key statistic is 93% of these vacant lots are zoned for single-family. And single-family gives us our highest student yield. So just to give you a little background on why we're growing, this is one of the key contributors. All right, now I want to share with you some data visualizations. And I'm going to show you year one of the projections, year five and year 10. So the key thing to notice with this map, areas in green, green is good. That means we have enough seats. Orange is kind of like a stoplight. Orange means we need to be cautious. Red means we're crowded. So let's look at year one of the projections next year and now here's year five. And then here's year 10. So the key takeaway, kind of looking at this over time, we're growing and we're growing all over the county, both north and south. They're going to be needs for more seats, just to be, make it as simple as possible. So that's elementary level.
I'm sorry to interrupt you and I promise this will be my only question, but I think it's a really important one when we're talking about the growth. So I know in the past, we had a lot of buy-right development out in the western parts of the county and then we did the downzoning. So how are you calculating the growth when you look 10 years out? Are you just taking an average of what's happened over the last few years? Are you looking at where residential subdivisions are in planning and zoning and where applications are prepared? Like what specifically are you looking at to get to those red line or red dots in 10 years?
Got it. So we're looking at active residential development. So we work very closely with the county's GIS department where we get great data on whether, you know, how many lots are available, the status of the lots. We also work closely with the permits department where we're getting information on occupancy permits, whether or not a building permit is issued. So we're tracking all of that information. And I also want to make clear that the data that we use is a snapshot in time when the projections were prepared. So as things change, some new development is approved, that wouldn't, if it comes after the date we prepare the projection, it'll be in effect, we'll show that in next year's projection. So every year, we do projections and every year, we're constantly updating our information to have the most accurate information we have at our disposal. And housing, again, is one of the factors. And we look at student yields based on history to project forward.
All right, so you answered my question. It's based on the history. So we cut the rural development by like, what, over 60% when we did the downzoning? So I'm sure that will have some applicability to the way that that is drawn out. But Mr. Presley, you might know better.
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe what Lionel was talking about is, he meets with the planning department as well. So Jeff, what he provides when he talks about the active developments, those are all platted. So those are pre-downzoning, they're buy-right, most of them are buy-right, but several of them were through zone changes that happened years ago, but they're pre-platted and we can't go back on those. And that's what they're basing those on. And then they do a projection based upon the current zoning and what, what the likely buy-right development would be from that point on. And again, it doesn't account for any future development proposals that might come forward. But it's a pretty accurate number based upon those that have already been platted and approved and just haven't been built yet.
So you're saying that this is accounting for the downzoning? Can we confirm that that was definitely done through planning and zoning?
Sure.
Perfect.
Okay, so moving on from elementary to middle school. Middle school, this is projection for next year. We only have one middle school projected to be crowded. Five years out, two middle schools, one north, one south. 10 years out, four middle schools, two north, two south. Let's move to high school. High school, we have two in the dark orange. We're okay, not good, but let's move to five years out, we see a lot of red. 10 years out, a whole lot of red, both north and south. All right. So now that I've given you some background information on enrollment projections, residential, active residential development and our projected seat needs, I'll pass it on to Mr. Anderson.
All right, thank you, Lionel. So you're looking at the school board adopted CIP priorities. And if you also see in red, the columns show what is included in the county-approved CIP. And we also have a column for seats added, which is obviously very important when we're talking about enrollment growth. And the complexity for the CIP is also more because of the aging facilities. So we'll get into a discussion of that a little bit as well. And we are actually already working on the CIP update. We had a school board work session in January and also discussed it again last night. So we're continually updating this plan. While y'all are reviewing the plan we submitted last September, we're also talking about what do we need to be improving on with this plan? Where should we focus our attention? So with this, a major development has been, we did engineering assessments for Drew and Hartwood. And the recommendation came back, it's not surprising to me, that replacements are going to be more affordable in the long, in the long run. When you're looking at renovating the older facilities, you're dealing with very complicated projects with multiple phases. And then you still are going to have some long-term costs, some additional costs, but just for the fact of having the older facilities. So we're incorporating that into the plan. High school six remains to be a top priority. You'll see some detail about the breakdown of the high school six proposed budget. Drew middle school replacement, also a very high priority because of the issues and the conditions that they're facing at that school. It's one of the, excuse me, one of the topics that comes up the most. And we actually took the technical review committee to Drew Middle School just to see what we're dealing with there. And then we have a series of priority number three because there's an opportunity to bundle our elementary school projects and possibly build those within the same general timeframe. There's some cost efficiencies that can be gained from that, especially when you consider an elementary school model, but also just the economy of scale of building elementary schools in the same general timeframe. So you have the elementary school 18, which I think could have been built yesterday and we would be filling it pretty well. Hartwood Elementary Replacement. We also have a Rising Star Replacement in this... We also have a Rising Star Replacement in this updated CIP. And then are also considering elementary school number nineteen. Some new projects we are also looking at for the update are an additional fleet services facility. And Mr. Jeff Jeter is here and has been speaking with us quite a bit about the needs they have for fleet, which is for the school fleet, also servicing a lot of the county fleet as well. North Stafford High School Fine Arts Wing renovation is a project that has remained on the list, as well as the possibility of the University of Mary Washington acquisition and renovation, which we'll continue to look at and develop this year. And then the interesting thing is that with the seats added with a Drew replacement, we're able to actually push out middle school number nine. So you're seeing that now in the FY 2035 timeframe. So it'll actually be outside of the ten-year window for completion. We've also removed the Drew Middle School renovation from the CIP in this update, as well as the high school number seven. And then a side note with the replacements is there'll be a reduction in the three R projects that were previously associated with Drew and Hartwood and Rising Star and Melchers Complex. Here's a breakdown of the, let me go to this slide first. For high school six, we looked at cost comparables within the state of high schools being built. And this was presented to the Joint Boards Workshop last February and shows some of the more recent high schools that have been completed in our area. We're at $266 a square foot. That's for the building costs. And I'll get down into the breakdown in a minute. But you can see that that's actually lower than the high schools in our area. We had two professional cost estimates done, and we actually went with the lower estimate. And our architects are working with that now. And I'm looking for cost efficiencies and trying to do the most practical, cost-effective high school that they can do. Still, you know, building a comprehensive high school is our goal. Here you can see the breakdown as it's been escalated up to the mid-year of construction cost. And you see the building only cost has escalated up to ninety-three million over time. And then that's, on top of that, you have the site work and then the other soft costs. And then this also includes the off-site costs that we have been discussing with the county as we've been pursuing the land acquisition. Finally, I want to speak about the three R summary. Three R project summaries include some of the major maintenance projects that Dr. Taylor mentioned. These are very important for minimizing disruptions in our schools and also minimizing the risk and emergency costs, which we have our fair share of. When something breaks, we have to make sure that it's going to work. And we really rely a lot on the ingenuity and the fast actions of our maintenance team to keep the buildings functioning properly. Here's a summary of the three R funding, which I want to point out, the category unfunded is about forty-one percent of the total. And that's what we're really lacking. And that, that total is going to continue to grow because as the buildings get older, you're going to have items added to the list. We're doing fourteen facility condition assessments this year. And so that'll, that'll lead to some revisions and updates of the three R list when we turn it in to y'all in September. Then finally, here's some key takeaways. As Lionel showed, we continue to grow about fifty-eight hundred students over the next decade. Our capital needs include new schools, land, also much-needed renovations and replacements. About sixty-three percent of Stafford County schools are over twenty years old. That's important because that's when some of these replacements come into play. And then the renovation projects are really to address deficiencies, enhance school safety, and minimize the service disruptions. And then as Dr. Taylor mentioned, and has had some ideas about, a new approach to the unfunded CIP projects is needed to catch up and also to meet the needs of the school system. So with that, Lionel and I will be glad to take any questions that you might have.
I'm going to do supervisor English because I did you first last time, and I saw you both at the same time.
Yeah, I've got some questions about the bus garage.
Sure.
I guess he would come up and answer the questions?
Sure, come on. Mr. Jeter, are you, are you going to come up and answer some?
And you probably can't answer. Why is that the fourth on the list? But I'll, probably after he gets his questions out, you'll answer.
He's asking that too.
Yeah. The question, a couple of questions I've got for you is, first of all, how old is the bus garage right now?
The bus garage was built in nineteen seventy-nine. They moved in in nineteen eighty.
So it's nineteen seventy-nine?
And they moved in it in eighty. They moved in it in nineteen eighty.
And when you, is the bus garage, what, what do you repair down there other than the school buses?
Right now, we do the school buses on one side. We do all the white fleet, which is, you know, white cars, pickups, vans. And we also take care of the county side. The biggest customer on the county side right now is law enforcement.
So you take care of law?
Because they keep wrecking cars every weekend.
Yeah, I wasn't going there.
So you're, you're taking law enforcement, county vehicles, plus the, plus the buses, correct? So are you, as far as, what about the, you don't have the room, right?
Oh, no. I've got four bays to work on anything under one ton. That's on school side and county. And I've got five bays to work on school buses. To when that building was built, there was a hundred and twelve school buses in the fleet. Now we're pushing between two ninety, three hundred school buses, same building.
So my question, you would, would, I probably, I know you would like a brand-new building, but what if we added, what if they added on to that building?
We're looking at that, and I know prior to me coming onboard to Stafford County, they did look into that, to expanding out the building. That would help me tremendously in fleet services, but transportation would be hurt then because we're taking more of the parking lot where they're actually, you know, parking their buses today.
So if you've got another building offsite somewhere else that could maybe take care of the white vehicles, the sheriff's office vehicles on a separate lot, and then just take care of school buses, that would work, right?
Yeah.
So that probably the price of the, price of the building wouldn't be as high?
Yeah, because I know, we, Johnny, we made on it. We're looking between nine million, eleven million dollars to, unless we had the land.
But that's if you, that's if you did the school buses too, right? And I'm just saying, if you do a separate building alone just for the white vehicles and not school buses, say you had a satellite up here for just white?
Excuse me, but one of the other issues with the transportation repair services is that the buses have grown bigger. So that the garages aren't adequate, and it's actually a safety hazard for the buses that we now have to repair.
Okay, so they could take the old garage and make it for the white vehicles and build a new garage for the buses, right? They could do that. And then would that help costs? Would that bring costs down a little bit?
Yeah, we're looking at all of that, and Mr. Jeter and I have discussed this a lot. How can we do this in an effective manner? That's how come we have proposed an additional fleet services facility, because we do want to be able to expand service, but we also want to take care of its most pressing needs. And when they work on these buses, I've been in there, they open the hood onto the workbench. The buses are longer, they don't really fit in there. So that's one of the problems we would address with the additional bays that are needed.
So would you, in your opinion, is this a safety issue?
Yes, evidently, yes.
So safety issues for the buses? So this should probably be a top priority, under the, under the, under number six high school?
No, and I can answer that as well. Because when you look at those other high priorities and you consider crowded schools and some of the issues that we're facing there, those can also be a safety issue too eventually.
But I want my kid to get there safely.
Yeah, and I understand.
You know, that's what I want.
And, and, and we're not going to do anything that's unsafe. So he's, he's working with what he has. So he's gonna, he's gonna make it work. It's, it's very cumbersome, and it can be a safety issue just because of the conditions.
You put him forth on the list, he can't do it.
Mr. English, that, that's the, that's the board's list, so you, you can talk to us. But certainly, it is a living document. We discussed it last night. We were focusing on the student growth. We're right now going through a very painful redistricting process, and we're trying to, to fit the kids in the school. Certainly, fleet services is a high priority.
It should be.
And, and certainly something we can address later on. But right now, we, we just wanted to let you know where we're, where we're at at the current time. But that list is always subject to change. I think if you look at the adopted versus the one we're discussing now, there's changes, you know, there in priority. So perhaps if we get some more information about fleet services, that, that may change as well.
That's very, yeah, we'll, we'll come back with more information. We appreciate that.
You know, giving us the information, but it's really the board that makes those, those decisions.
I think buses and transportation was a big issue last year.
No, and I, I don't mean to be argumentative. I just think it's a problem.
No, and I'm not either.
It's a problem of be, having so many high priorities. So, but I, I agree, we need to come back with more information about fleet services.
Definitely.
Just to put a pin in this one, and then we can go on to Ms. Allen. How many acres would be needed for a new site? Like, if we were just looking at how much acreage you would need, what would that be?
So there are different acreages needed for, oh, for the fleet facility. So we actually are looking at several sites for that. And we were thinking it would need to be like ten acres?
We don't start building, it's gonna be at least no less than ten. I know when I built Spotsy, that was a hundred and twenty acres, but we got five to four.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Ms. Allen?
I didn't have any more questions.
Good, because your time is up. No, you're go, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I ask questions, I have just two requests from staff. Is it possible to get the debt service for elementary school right after high school number six? Because you guys were talking about concurrent elementary schools being built in the, what, twenty-six, right after five, high school six opens? The second request is, what percent of our tax rate will the school's CIP take up each year based on this presentation? Based on the school's requests? That's for our staff. To my questions, based on what you showed us with the student growth, why isn't a high school being considered for the north?
There was, there were meetings about that more than a year ago. I can turn that over to?
No, I know, but I'm saying outside of six, because even if six is built, I don't see anything that tells me that the north will be remedied. Because if anything, it shows me north will have more students than the south within the ten-year prediction.
Yeah, I can let Lionel.
And I'll, I'll start the conversation, but Lionel, you can jump in.
Yep.
When we build high school six right now, if you, if you look where all of our high schools are currently constructed and located, they are all north-central other than Stafford High School. So we have a huge gap down in our southwest quadrant. And we have bus rides right now that are pushing, really car rides right now that are pushing over thirty minutes, and when you put them in a car, it's a considerable distance.
When you talk to Wildwater, where our kids will ride, well, almost forty-five minutes to get to Brookpoint.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree.
Well, let me, when we looked at putting the high school in the southwest corner, it does a couple of things. First of all, our high school routes are least efficient routes. But the other thing it does is it tightens up all the attendance zones around, like, Brookpoint so that there will be, it will, it will adjust those student populations. We will need another high school at some point. But by putting it in the southwest, it actually did fix a lot of the attendance zones around our other high schools, and it helped with our transportation problem too.
We currently have students that drive from the Hartwood District and pass over students to go to Colonial Forge. They pass Stafford High School to go to Colonial Forge, and then the Mountain View students meet at a stop sign with the Forge students. So they cross over each other. So one of the things is that Hartwood is a large-growth area. If we moved that high school to the southwest, those students are not on those back roads crisscrossing over each other. They go to a high school. And where we have the crowding in the north, you pull out those southwest kids, you have room in the north. That's why.
But I don't, I don't see how that changes Wildwater's dynamics because you can't really, the only high school in Wildwater kids go to is Brookpoint. So they're still going to sit for forty-five minutes regardless.
And I'm not talking about transportation time per se. I'm just talking about crowding. That's, I'm talking about numbers of students, population in a building. That's all.
And, and I don't disagree with you. It's just that the bigger problem.
There's, there's growth in Wildwater coming in ten years.
I think I just heard the Jeopardy buzzer.
So I'm just saying that, and, and Lionel and I would be happy to sit down with you and show you how those attendance zones would change. It won't fix the problem with Wildwater, but Wildwater is a unique problem. It's, it's, you know, you, it's eleven miles just to get off the peninsula, so, so, so it is.
But if there's growth coming, we have to be able to meet those needs because we can't neglect the, the north.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Sorry, Lionel, Lionel's like, I'm.
I'd just like to add to everything that was said. Is that in the school board's adopted CIP priorities, there is high school seven. So there is a school identified in the north and, well, conceivably, two schools, one in the north, one in the south. So to answer your question, it is in the school board's CIP.
They must think this board's voting for rezonations.
The other question, the other question?
Keep inviting all these subdivisions to build.
We don't though. We haven't approved one. That's not true. That's not true. We haven't voted for them.
There's two more, there's two more questions. I think they, they kind of relate, and this probably goes to the superintendent a little bit more so, and then to your staff too. Do you think reimagining what a school looks like will help with costs? And I say this because I went to school in New York City, and for us, equity didn't mean that I had the identical building to what my neighbors had. It meant that maybe we offer some programs that was unique to my school, which we did, versus another school to help make up that equity issue. And with that, would that, would you guys oscillate then between program design versus capacity? Because if the debt, if you are asking for two schools right after the high school, that debt service is going to look awful to us.
Yeah. And, and the growth is, is looking awful to us too in some regard, but it's also an opportunity. And I actually really like that question because there's a lot of things that excite us. I, I think there's a tremendous possibility with an underutilized Mary Washington campus that can be reimagined and to some programmatic opportunities, potentially at the younger kid level and some at the secondary kid level. And that would look nothing like anything that we have right now. And there really are, there really are some exciting chances for us to reimagine what a secondary experience could look like, both in part where some of the day they're spending the time in a brick-and-mortar setting, and some of the day they're spending some time out in the field. And how do we structure that? That could free up some seat capacity too. I think that there's a whole host of things that are at our disposal. I, I really like that, that notion a lot.
How do we get that started so that, so that our wallets aren't, aren't being squeezed?
Yeah, and, and I, and I think it's important to, for us to think about the, the big needs in general right now because at the very soonest, if we were to decide today, like, right this minute, we had fourteen really committed people and wanted to see some projects just happen, and there was a lot of direction that said, "Mr. Presley, you're going to have to go get bond financing for X, Y, and Z, or put a, put a referendum on the, on the next ballot and make this happen." We are still two years away from opening the doors of any building. So at the very least, we've got to think about what this could look like at the thirty-thousand-foot view before we start picking apart where we could parse out seats. So I, I like that. It definitely frees us up some time to think about what that could look like. We definitely added and made a recommendation, and the board also endorsed this on the school side to look at the Mary Washington property for just that reason, because there, there's just a ton of opportunity there. And it's in a, in a location that may or may not be convenient depending on the type of programming that you're offering, or depending on the type of partnerships that we could have, that would be public-private partnerships that we could leverage. There's just a ton of exciting things to look at. But I, I don't know that it would be responsible for us to say to you, "Oh, don't worry about this extra school," when we haven't fleshed out what the programming could be like. We should probably think about, these are the big brick-and-mortar needs, and we've at least got to start planning ahead for it. And if this other thing doesn't work out, you know, you're not caught off guard with saying like, "Oh, the schools are trying to slip in a project at the last minute" when in reality, that, that's not what we should ever do. We should be a lot more deliberate about the steps that we take.
All right, so President Owen, and then Lonkey, and then Mary. So keep it brief, because we're already?
Way over. Yep, I'll be very quick. I'd love to sit down with you because I'm, I've been harping, and I'll use that word because it's true. I've been harping about Mary Washington for?
Mary Washington will not be a high school, Tom.
And, and at our retreat, I mentioned something other than that. So that, quite honestly, if you look at your maps, the overcrowded elementary schools are at Rocky Run and Hartwood, and it gets further that way. So there are other options that can be done there that could open something up sooner rather than at the timeframe that's on here for these renovations or building of brand-new schools. And so it's a question of looking at, at the data and looking at the, the maps. Secondly, one of the things that could be, I like the idea of reimagining stuff. But sometimes, to me, it doesn't make sense to, to just go ahead with nineteen-fifties thinking until we finally get to reimagining that we're in the middle, almost in the middle of the twenty-first century. But the renovation of North Stafford High School that is in your item has no seat capacity in?
and yet if you look at it, and under this, it would be opening in twenty twenty-seven, I think, fiscal, yep. The, but the redlining or the red coloring happens in earlier than that, so that certainly, if we're going to be looking at that, we could certainly do a renovation with seat capacity. So there, I love the idea of trying to think outside the box, and I've been harping on that before, when I was on the school's long-range planning committee. And, you know, and looking at the attendance zones, and we're doing redistricting right now, we could not do the high school zone that we're looking at, which has Colonial Forge and two different things, which is noncontiguous. That would be unconstitutional. So certainly envisioning what we need to do, we could be looking at whatever was done in that, to make that better.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Number one, fleet maintenance facility has been on the CIP at the bottom of the list since I was on the school board back in two thousand seven, eight, and nine. Wow, yeah, and I remember we had some OSHA issues back then. Can't imagine what those are now. So anyway, moving on to my next question, point, the school division had leftover money from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, correct? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and we've allocated, we spent some of that money on bus drivers, a million and a half dollars. We spent one point eight million at our recent board of supervisors meeting for new buses, correct? So we've got three point three million left over. Has that money been allocated, or do you anticipate allocating that leftover money for anything else?
So I know some of the funds have been allocated, actually, for capital project needs at the board of supervisors, or direction to county staff, but right now, there's no other direct needs that we're requesting for that. I'm sure we will have more. I don't know the balance offhand, if maybe Andrea does, but there's still a few million dollars left over top of what the board of supervisors directed the staff to set aside for capital projects in high school six.
Okay, well, we're in the middle of our capital improvement conversation, so that's a conversation that the board of supervisors can have, so. And I think that's a really important conversation for us, when we have two turf fields that need to be built in this county. And I don't care what you say, but it doesn't matter if it's theater work, people that are into drama, or if you're into the music, or you're into athletics, they all, each one is as important as the other. And we are definitely impacting students and their ability to go out and get scholarships, whether it's D-three or D-one sports, and, you know, a lot of people are paying for all these different travel sports, and then they go out and they can't even compete at the same level. That's like having an instrument that hasn't been fine-tuned, you know, for five years, and you're playing a trumpet that's totally out of tune. Okay, really? So I feel that the board of supervisors, we gotta work with the school division and our colleagues to figure out how we do that, whether it's one this year or two. You know, if you finance, so even if we took that money and paid cash, we could, or if you wanted to finance a million and a half for one field over fifteen years, that's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That's not a whole lot of money. I know we're up against our debt limit, but it's something that we all need to consider. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Monkey.
You're welcome. And neither of those schools are in my district, but it's something that I really care about, because you guys had fourteen millions dollars left over when you backed in fiscal year twenty money that was left over, because we all redid our budgets. So just remember, we had fourteen million dollars. I know that staff, I'm looking at Andrea, we had talked about bringing some of that money over and setting it aside for high school number six, and, but I think that's part of the sausage-making for the board of supervisors for this year, okay? I also just want to say, rising star replacement on here, eighty students. This, you would not, under any circumstances, no matter what the program is, put your own name in there, pick a name. When you're looking at building a hundred and fifty-million-dollar high school for twenty-one hundred students, that's sixty-nine thousand dollars per student, about the same numbers for replacing Drew Middle School and Hartwood Elementary. For fifty-four million dollars for eighty students, that's six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per student!
And that would be-
Am I doing my math wrong?
It would be eighty additional students.
Yeah, it's eighty net gain. Yeah, sorry for that confusion.
Oh, eighty net gain? For fifty-four million?
It's to replace the existing student capacity, and then also to add the eighty students that were in the previous additional capacity project that was in the approved CIP. So it's additional net gain of eighty students.
Oh, my gosh, I completely read that, and there's no footnote with it.
Yeah, and I apologize, we should have made that clearer.
Okay, so that's for eighty additional, so we're basically tearing down old Gale Middle School, or Malters now. Okay. Yeah, it is. Okay, yeah, I've got a lot of questions, but time is of the essence. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Cohen, did you go yet, or you're next? All right, I've lost track. All right, supervisor Young, you're next, and then Ms. Gary.
Thank you, ma'am chair and supervisor Bonkey, for making the comments. Turf field, yes, equity. But let's talk about north. Let's not take away something that we already approved, something that we already decided that is equity, when Brookpoint, Colonial Forge, Mountain View got wings, when they don't even ask for it. I begged for North Stafford to have that wing for equity reasons, just like you said about instruments being able to play that, or being able to go into one door because they can't get out the other door. Supervisor Allen had brought that up at one of the meetings. So let's not do that. Let's not take things off of the table. Let's make sure that these students have what they deserve, be it a turf field, be it a wing, just like everybody else, because these are people's kids that we're talking about. We have to remember who we are talking about. Students, right? Park Ridge, crowded. There needs to be a school there. We have land. Let's not move these kids over and over again. They're stable, they're there. There are schools that are open and have seats. Let's not look at those that are the loudest and have lists of emails and addresses and show up every time at the meetings, because they're loudest, we want to quiet them down. No. Let's take care of those students that don't have the voices. Let's make sure that we are taking care of everybody equally. Drew, I've been in there. Ms. Bonkey made a comment about Drew also. Let's make sure that we take care of those students. I'm not gonna deliberate on the pricing and where we at, because we're out of time, but let's make sure that somehow these things keep going down the list, and I know this is a moving target, but let them not slip off of this list. Okay?
Drew's number two, right after the high-
Oh, it moved back up?
Drew, last night-
Oh, thank you!
We moved Drew up to number two, and increasing the capacity by about three hundred forty-some students.
Well, bless your heart. Okay, well, thank you. I stand corrected.
Supervisor here.
I know when supervisor Young is, excuse me, vice chairwoman, gets excited about something, she sounds like me when I used to come and speak at the board meetings, right? I have, though. Am I doing, am I doing well? If I take a deep breath and then I speak, then you know it's coming, though. So I, yes. I was just looking at, I've been thinking about this as well, that last key takeaway about new funding approach being needed to address the unfunded projects. And so my question was, what are we looking at for that in the future? Because once we stop the bleeding on this, along with several other things that we're dealing with in the county, we have to be proactive. And so are we looking at something like some sort of funding mechanism that we are preparing to build additional schools in the future, instead of waiting to be like, "Oh, my gosh, the maps can be read in a couple of years." So I'd love to hear about that, please.
So for your large capital needs, like building school buildings or replacing school buildings, you probably should take out a debt service and look at bond referendums and VPSA bonds and a whole host of funding options for that. But for your ongoing major maintenance, I don't think that that should be debt-financed. I really don't. And I think it's a bold step that the school board took in making an addition to the operating budget to start building a fund year over year that gets added to the base, so that right now, the contribution from the county to this ongoing major maintenance fund, this three R fund, was it replace, renovate, and rebuild? Or rehab? It's major maintenance. It's HVAC units, it's roofs, it's major paint jobs, it's carpet replacements, tile replacement, it's a lot of that big, heavy work, because stuff does break over time. That should be a part of our operating budget, and that's something that, you know, I can't come to you in good faith and say, "I need twenty million dollars to make this happen," but asking for chunks over the next several years to build into a fund that's part of our base budget, I think really does make sense, and I think it would alleviate the strain that comes to this, that this is a bone of contention moving forward, that we just are taking care of the resources that we have, taking care of the assets that we have, because we're putting aside the right amount of money to cover these things.
So you're saying that the three R addresses that?
Yeah, because right now, you've got forty-one percent of the three R that just never gets funded. And so that can gets kicked down the road every year, so why not let's just set aside a little extra money every year to start building that fund up every year, so that we do have enough money to cover that in full? And so that, and candidly, this is the real issue, is so that we don't have to replace buildings every forty or fifty years, we replace buildings every sixty years.
Yeah, because I own a home, and I don't wait until my HVAC breaks down. I have a, yeah, you guys are with me on this, yeah. So that's definitely something I think we need to be doing for the maintenance of our buildings. Thank you.
And that's repair, replacement, and renovation.
All right, any other questions? I appreciate you taking this step, and we have three new board members going on board time. So, no, I think, I think both of that, so I think it's easier to have a very good bunch of professionals, a lot of question, and we have a lot of other areas.
We're grateful for the extra time, ma'am chair. Thank you.
Well, I think we really should have a follow-up, and perhaps we can schedule the three-on-three, and I know, Mr. English, and there were several questions from supervisors, which I'm sure we'll, you know, get back to you very shortly, but I think it would be helpful to follow up, because it's good to get your perspective, you know, as well. And we talked about it last night, we came up with priorities, but that's not in concrete at all. You know, we're constantly looking at this, but one thing I think would be really helpful to discuss is the potential bundling of these elementary schools, because Dr. Taylor has a lot of experience in finance, and, you know, he's told us that there's a significant potential cost savings if we, you know, a lot more than, you know, one contract at a time. So if we could, if we could, you know, look into that three-on-three, I think it would be, it would be helpful. But thank you for your time, and we've got a few minutes to tune in to Mr. Burnett.